I want to welcome everybody to the town hall meeting tonight. We're still bringing people into the room, so if you'll hang on with us for another moment or two and then we'll get started. Okay, so I think we're just about there and I'd like to thank everyone for being here this evening. We have great participation tonight. So, a lot of people on the line, we've received a lot of questions. I'm sure we'll see more throughout the chat. I want to direct you to the bottom of your screen. There should be an area there where if you can click on chat, you will see on the right-hand side of your screen a place where you can enter your questions there. We have received about 19 questions though already, so we're going to go to the ones that we received first and try to address some of them right off the bat here. Fortunately, a lot of them fall into kind of the same category, so I don't think we're actually going to be answering 19 separate questions, right? It'll be a little bit less than that and then we'll get to the ones that you want to ask tonight that are coming up on the screen. But I suspect we're going to be talking about a lot of the things that you might have on your mind anyway, so let's see what happens here. So, I'm Julia and Mary, do you want to say hello to everyone?
Hi. Election reform is something that's been on everybody's mind since the election in June and probably a little bit before, but this is something that Councilor Coats and I felt that we wanted to try to answer your questions tonight, so thank you for joining us.
Indeed. I'm really pleased-
Julia, you want to take the first question?
Yeah. I'm really pleased that there's such interest and it doesn't surprise me at all that there are many more people joining us tonight on this chat. We've got several questions that have come up around a subject that is of concern for all of us and that's the subject of ballot harvesting. And that's kind of a large general term for the practice of what goes on in several parts of maybe collecting ballots, handing ballots to third parties, and having those ballots disappear for whatever reason before they actually reach the hands of the Election Commission. Some of the questions around ballot harvesting sort of presume that this is going on in the Cherokee Nation and I don't know that we have ever had any actual proof of that, although there is certainly widespread speculation and there are some real reasons for that speculation. But I think in responding to the questions around ballot harvesting, we probably need to say in advance that this is something that is suspected, but it's not something that's ever truly been demonstrated. It's actually happening. So, one of the questions, one of the first ones that we received is which tribal councilors support your initiative to end ballot harvesting? And I don't know that I have an initiative to end ballot harvesting, but I think that if we kind of flip that question over, I doubt if you would find any of the tribal councilors who would say that they were supportive of ballot harvesting. So, no one's going to say that on the tribal council. In terms of, I think the real question is around the collection of ballots by third party. And I think my feeling about it would be that the ballot should be handled only by the voter. And I would personally be in favor of some kind of restriction against anybody bringing in the ballot on behalf of the voter. There are some differences of feeling among the tribal council members about that, I think. And one of the most common arguments I hear is about people who are maybe disabled or something like that, who for whatever reasons are not able to get out. But everybody gets mail, you know, whether you're homebound or not. So, I'm not sure that argument, it seems to me like we're trying, we might be trying to legislate for the benefit of a few people in a way that would burden the majority of the people or the interests of the majority of the people. So, this is something that's still under discussion at this point, but I would personally, and I think Mary probably would agree from the discussions that we've had, would be in favor of limiting how many people can actually handle the ballot to maybe just the voter and the Election Commission. Mary, do you want to, you have thoughts? Do you want to weigh in?
Well, I totally agree with you, Julia, on that. The fewer the people that touch the ballot, the safer the ballot is and, you know, the integrity of the vote is understood at that point. And that way, the person who submitted that, they are truly represented in the best light and I totally support what you just said.
Yeah. We'll see. You know, I think there are some arguments out there that councilors are making and I know that from the perspective of the Election Commission, they have indicated that they really don't have a problem with third-party collection of absentee ballots. Their main concern seems to be a timeframe for counting them. One of the reasons that we don't get election results until sometimes 3:00, 4:00 o'clock in the morning is because of the practice of candidates and their supporters coming in and dropping absentee ballots on the Election Commission literally moments before the polls close. And that really sets them back in terms of their ability to count in timely fashion. The Election Commission does not seem to have a problem with the collection of ballots by third parties. They just want them turned in earlier. That seems, so I'll just say that. So, there is some difference about whether this is okay or whether it isn't on the part of the Commission and the part of other councilors. One of the other questions around that is, is it illegal to steal elections by harvesting ballots? And it's as if not, why not? And if it is illegal, why is the punishment? I'm not recalling anything specific in our current election code that addresses ballot harvesting. And I think that we have never, you know, had proof or actually demonstrated that this is being done, as I said before. And so, it's not specifically illegal to my knowledge and so therefore there's no specific punishment that's outlined. One thing I intended to say at the outset of this meeting is that there is a work group comprised of eight members of the tribal council that is currently meeting once a month, has met for the last three months to discuss a lot of these kinds of initiatives and questions. The process is that once the work group has kind of gone through some things and reached a consensus about things within that group, then they will bring the proposals out to the full tribal council for discussion. And when that happens, it becomes an open meeting and all of you will be able to watch those meetings and hear the discussion. But right now, it's just a group that is kind of hashing things out, seeing what things we might be able to find consensus about and what we don't have consensus on. And while those discussions are going on and, you know, those discussions have not even been conveyed to the full tribal council yet, it would be inappropriate for us to talk about them before the tribal council even knows what's being discussed. I am a member of that work group. Mary is an alternate to that work group. Both of us have attended at least one meeting of the three that have been held so far. I've attended all three. Mary has attended one as an alternate. And we have been in discussion with each other about all of them. The next question around ballot harvesting, if the tribal council fails to approve legislation to ban ballot harvesting, do you consider a referendum banning collection of ballots by third parties to be in order? And a referendum would be something that would be initiated by the citizens. And I think that if the citizens, if there are citizens who feel strongly about this and who want to begin the referendum process, which is set out in the Constitution, that it would be absolutely appropriate for citizens who felt that way to proceed in that manner. That's, yeah, that's my response. Mary, do you have?
Well, I'd like to go back to what you talked about, about was it illegal to steal elections by harvesting ballots and if not, why? What would the punishment be? You know, it was known in this past election that there were people who went door-to-door out in the communities to notarize ballots. And I personally feel that notary is not needed and that the appearance and opportunity of anything, you know, impropriety-wise would be gone if we eliminated the notary that is required on these ballots. You know, Julia, you're from California and out there, I think some people are paying $12, you know, per vote to have their ballots notarized. And if we could do away with the notary requirement, which is not required in our U.S. federal elections, I might add, if we could do away with that, there would be no reason for anyone to be knocking on your door to assist you with your ballot. I mean, we would have the postage already on there. You could mark your ballot and you could put it in the U.S. mail and, you know, put it on what and it would be counted. And I think the appearance that people are concerned about would be of any improprieties by having that ballot notarized. What's your thought, Julia? You're from California and I know we have many at-large Cherokee citizens who it's very expensive to participate in Cherokee elect. And I think it's important that we help all our citizens and here we are representing at-large and California represents a huge amount of our at-large Cherokees and I don't ever want to see anyone penalized for the right to vote. What's your feeling?
I absolutely feel the same way and we do have a, you know, a set of questions that we received that are specifically about the process of notarizing ballots. And so, I think we, I think you're absolutely right and I think we'll address very specifically that whole process of notarization. But I absolutely agree with you that the fact that these ballots have to be notarized, that in and of itself is giving an opening for people to go door-to-door. And it becomes not only the process of notarizing, but then the follow-up question is, and would you like me to take the ballot and mail it for you? If that notary requirement is eliminated, it becomes very much more obvious that somebody is simply coming to your door and asking you to give them your ballot. And that, you know, if we eliminate the notary, it strips the facade off of what is actually going on here, which is ballot collection, perhaps for the purpose of harvesting.
I agree with you.
But I'm going through the questions that we have here. Hang on just a second.
While you're going through there, I'd like to share with everybody about our committee. What transpired is our government relations liaison went around the break room and asked who would like to be on the election reform committee. And I was in my office that day and when she picked up eight people in the break room and by the time I heard about it, I was coming out of my office and this is how I got to be an alternate. But I do want our at-large citizens to know that you are there at every meeting and I do get to fill in if there is a vacancy, if someone's not able to attend, because we do want at-large represented on this. We represent the majority of the votes. As a matter of fact, today, I believe there were 32,103 registered at-large citizens eligible to vote and we want to represent you. And I want everyone to know that one of us will always be at these meetings because we want to represent our citizens.
Yeah, the process of, I mean, I had actually emailed to the speaker of the council and, you know, almost immediately after I was elected in the runoff and saying that I, you know, if there was going to be a subcommittee, a work group, whatever it was, that I would like to be on it. So, I think he had received some emails from people, other people had maybe voiced it to him, but it, yeah, I agree, it was a pretty informal process of selecting the people. The reason it was limited to eight people is because if we had one more, if we had nine, it would constitute a quorum of the council and at that point, it would have to be an open public meeting. And they wanted to give the work group opportunity to work on this a little bit more informally, you know, and get some kind of concrete proposal in place and then bring it out for discussion to the full council and to the public. I think those are, there were, I think that's about it on the questions that we've received about ballot harvesting and ballot collection. We had a question about the filing fee for, to run for each office. So, I think it's for the principal chiefs race, I believe it's $5,000, is that right? The filing fee for the deputy chief?
Principal chief is $2,500 for the principal chief, $2,000 for the deputy chief, and then $500 for the tribal council candidates to run. And if that is what it costs for you to run for public office, at least in Cherokee Nation, and if so, what is being proposed? And it's been my experience on the committee meeting that I attended that we're not there yet to discuss the filing fees on what these positions are charging. But I do think that the lower the fee, the more people would have the opportunity to be involved and run for office.
Yeah. I agree with that. I have not heard that brought up by anyone though. Have you?
Not at all. You know, this is a very, I want to share with everybody that this group on this election reform committee is very diversified. We've got a broad mixture of personalities and counselors on this and I think some good work will come of this committee and I personally am very hopeful.
We have some questions that are about absentee voting, just the process of voting, about absentee ballots and things like that. And I know that for at-large citizens in particular, this is a really, really big subject because the first question is, is voting restricted to absentee voting, thereby eliminating walk-in voting? And so, what are the requirements? For at-large people, the only place where they can vote in person is at the Election Commission office in Pallico on the early voting walk-in date. That's the only place where at-large people can vote in person. And I, what, something that really shocked me in the election last year is I discovered something I had never known was, is that there were people in Tulsa who were walking into precincts that were for the districts within the boundary in North Tulsa, most likely, that had been voting there in person and that the precinct workers had been taking those ballots. And so, they were under the impression that throughout all of these years, that they had been voting in person, that their votes were being counted and they were not being counted. Those ballots were being tossed. They were voting a challenge ballot and the challenge ballot was not being accepted by the Election Commission because they were an at-large voter and at-large voters cannot vote in person at any precinct. So, if there are people on here that are in the Tulsa area or in the Skogee, I don't know if this is happening there as well, just be aware of that, please, that the only place where at-large people can vote in person is in Palico on early voting days. Other than that, you've got to vote by absentee ballot. That's the law. Mary, did you have any?
Well, I think the first thing we want to encourage everybody to do is first talk, make sure that you are registered to vote, but then to request that absentee ballot. It is not something that's automatically sent to you because you're a registered citizen. You must request that absentee ballot to be able to cast your vote and send it in unless you are able to do the walk-in, walk-in to Cherokee Nation, the Election Commission, and cast your ballot. That is the only exception that we have presently. And so, make sure that you always request that ballot. Hopefully, through this committee, changes will be made in regards to this, but in the event they're not, please always remember you must request your ballot to vote if you are at-large and unable to walk in to cast your ballot in person.
Yeah. It's one of the things that I put on the list of things I would like to see considered is that that requirement that it be requested every single year be eliminated. What I would really like to see is a system where anyone who has requested an absentee ballot once and has actually voted it, does not have to request it again. If you have voted by absentee ballot in any of the last, I don't know, two or three elections, right, including the midterm election, then I would like to see it changed that you will automatically receive an absentee ballot and don't have to keep requesting it every time. Voting by absentee ballot is a complex and difficult process in our system and it definitely suppresses the vote. And it suppresses the at-large vote in particular because about 75% of the absentee ballots received in any election come from at-large voters. We have some, we have some questions on the notary process and Mary has talked about that a little bit and I completely agree. I don't see that the requirements to notarize ballots are serving any purpose at all in our elections. I don't think it's ensuring greater integrity. I don't think it's doing anything except making it more difficult for people to vote and for at-large voters in particular to vote. It is required right now. The question we have is a notary verification required on absentee ballots at this time? Yes, that's one thing we would like to be eliminated. If not, what form of ID will be required if a notary verification is eliminated? For instance, do you consider assigning barcodes to voters' ballots so ballots can be tracked if that would be effective? Voters' ballots are already being tracked, right? We know who voted. We don't know how they voted, but we know whose ballots will return. So, that's already happening and that, it's not really, I mean, the thing the notary is supposedly trying to verify is that it is the voter who casts the ballot, not someone else. In California, and this is the point I would make, is we have almost 39 million citizens in the state of California, not Cherokee citizens, right, but U.S. citizens who are voting. And California doesn't require a notary. California verifies things by the signature. They match the signature on the ballot to the signature on the initial absentee request. And there is software that can do that. So, I think if California can handle an election with a population of 39 million in the state, then the Cherokee Nation, anywhere from 13,000 to 20,000 people who vote in an election can do that. It's really not that difficult. Mary, do you have additional thoughts about that?
No, I totally agree with you though, Julia. It's a shame, you know, two years ago, I tried desperately to find a notary for a housebound citizen who had no way to communicate basically outside, with the outside world, other than her phone. And I actually called the Chamber of Commerce, a car dealership, I called her bank, I called another bank, I called the city library and I couldn't find anyone, you know, to get down to notarize that woman's ballot. And I think sooner that this, you know, that consideration is given toward changing this requirement, the better off all our citizens will be. I think it's a win-win thing to do away with a notary. I really do.
Yeah. There's data out there that indicates that election fraud doesn't happen at the level of the individual voter. Election fraud, when it happens, most often happens at the level of the campaign. So, I, you know, this notary requirement is just not serving any purpose except to make it more difficult for Cherokee citizens to vote. I'm hopeful. I truly am. I'm hopeful that we can get this eliminated this time. If there's anything else about notaries here, we have questions about the Election Commission specifically. What are your thoughts on ensuring that election law requires the Election Commission to confirm receipt electronically if the request arrived electronically or in writing if the request arrived via regular mail for all requests for absentee ballots? My personal experience and then what I've heard is feedback from people is that when the absentee request is submitted electronically, that there is generally a confirmation email that comes back from the Election Commission. I don't know that that's, I don't think that's in the law though. I think that's policy that they have established. And I don't think there's any notice of receipt if the ballot request arrives through regular mail in any way other than electronically. I think it would be a good thing to require, but I also know from experience that even with that receipt, because we assisted a couple of people, my campaign assisted a couple of people in their last election who had received that receipt and yet had not received a ballot. And when they went back to the Election Commission to let them know that and to request an absentee ballot, the Election Commission could not find any records that they had sent that receipt, even though they had it, the voter had it, my campaign had it copied to us. We were able to prove that they had sent it and yet they denied that they had and the voter did not receive a replacement ballot. So, you know, what do you do about things like that? But I agree, I think that this needs to be required. But again, what would make this a whole lot simpler is if people just didn't have to do that absentee ballot request every single time. That's really the thing that overwhelms the Election Commission. Any thoughts? I don't know if Mary is still with us. She's disappeared off my screen. The next question is, what are the thoughts, what are our thoughts on minimum qualifications to serve as a member of the Election Commission? And then there's a similar question, have you considered how Election Commission members are hired slash appointed? And yeah, that's something I have thought about. I think it's a problem when, yeah, Mary's internet connection has gone out. I just got notice of that. I think that it's a problem when election commissioners are appointed by elected officials. That is a relationship that's too close, in my opinion, and yet that's how it's set up right now. The thing is, it's not set up that way in our Constitution. So, this is something that could be changed legislatively and I do think it's something that- And I do think it's something that, that should be considered. I would personally, and what I have proposed, is a more random collection of election commissioners. Yes, I do think there needs to be some kind of background or some kind of experience in the conduct, conducting elections, uh, that should be required. And, um, I've talked about this with other people and so I can't claim that this is entirely my idea. But, but, uh, I think that, that if we treated service on the Election Commission more like a job, meaning that we had a job description, we had minimum qualifications that were identified, and then we had, um, a vetting process basically to verify the qualifications that people had submitted. And we could turn that over to HR maybe, at Cherokee Nation to do it. If we don't want to get the government involved, there's, we could create some other entity or go to some other entity to do that. Once we have a pool of applicants whose qualifications have been vetted and verified, I would favor just throwing it to a random selection made by a computer to select five people out of a pool of qualified applicants to, to play this role. And just take the elected officials out of the process of appointing, uh, election commissioners. Cause that's, you know, that's, that's a conflict of interest in my opinion. What are your thoughts, Mary? Any?
Julia, I have to be honest. I went off air there for a couple of minutes because I, I, I'm not sure what, I, I caught the tail end about, I'm sure it's about the Election Commission. And, uh, right now, well, the two are appointed by the chief, two by council, and then out of that, the four elect, uh, a fifth one. And did I understand you to say that to vet them through HR, anyone that's interested? Is that what you were saying?
Yeah, I was, I was essentially, the point being, take the, the appointment of these offices out or the positions out of the hands of the, the chief and the council. Get the elected officials out of that process because I, you know, it, 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 there's too much potential for conflict of interest and for the politicization of the establishment of the Election Commission. Just, you know, create a much more random process. You know, that, so it can be much more neutral and much more unbiased than.
You know, I, I like that idea. I like that idea and I thank you for sharing that. I think, I think that's something we all ought to think about.
Yeah. And as I said, I can't claim complete credit for that idea. That came out of discussions with some, some other people, some of whom are on this, uh, this town hall tonight. What is, oh, okay. What is our legal recourse in not having our votes count in the last general election? Can we sue the council, the Election Commission, and the applicable individuals? And Mary, you, you talked with someone today about this, did you not?
Well, yeah, I, I did run it by someone, uh, because I wanted to make sure that I was answering this correctly. First off, I am not an attorney and, uh, but I, I do want, I do want to say that, you know, no, we really have no recourse because of sovereign immunity. You know, everyone was doing their job. And, uh, from a legal recourse, we don't have one. If, if, if someone would use, would, uh, choose to pursue that, they really don't have a legal recourse because everyone was doing their job and because of our sovereign immunity. And, uh, as a Cherokee citizen, I, I'm thankful we have that sovereign immunity. And I think that's the life and breath and the very thing we need to fight. You know, hardest for to maintain it always. But, uh, again, no, uh, we don't have any legal recourse. There is not a legal recourse. And, uh, I did run that by, uh, a legal advisor today and, uh, and they agreed with that, uh, my interpretation on that.
Yeah. No, I agree. I mean, sovereign immunity, you can't sue the tribe. You can't sue, um, you can sue individuals of the tribe, but I don't think you could sue the tribal council because they had nothing to do with the election process. It's not their decision. Um, you know, the Election Commission, you could sue them perhaps in their individual capacity. But, you know, again, as Mary said, there's not really, I mean, there's nothing in our law that would have addressed the situation that we found ourselves in when a candidate was disqualified after absentee ballots had already been sent out and after voting had already begun. So, you know, it's, they, I mean, they didn't do anything wrong. They may have made a determination that many people didn't agree with. But, you know. So it is one thing, I think that we're discussing, uh, about perhaps putting a limit if, uh, you know, if the disqualifications maybe can't be made after ballots are, have already gone out. Or perhaps that, uh, if ballots have already gone out and there's a disqualification, that maybe we follow the example of the Creek Nation just recently and just have a do-over of it, of the whole thing. Several people, I think, have brought up the example of the Creek Nation's recent elections. And it just said, you know, if we're, if we need to do this to get a good election, just start over. Just do it again, uh, as they did. You know, we'll see what happens here. Do you want to take the next one, Mary? The?
Sure. The question, uh, that is, do you consider Cherokee elections to be secure and valid? Uh, actually, I do consider the elections to be secure and valid. Candidate at the, they're allowed to submit names. And they get to pick, uh, a, a date in time for that watcher to be present when votes are cast or counted, excuse me, not cast, but counted. And they, what happens is the Election Commission goes in and they do a draw. And when that, upon that draw, you find out when your watchers are able to be in there to watch. And I think it depends on how many candidates possibly there are. I'm not sure on that absolutely positive. But I do know that there's always people in there watching to make sure that everything is done correctly and precisely and that the tabulations are exact. And I do feel that our elections are safe and secure. And I, I, I have no question, you know, that they're valid. And, uh, that's how I see it as a, as a former candidate and as a tribal counselor. You know, I think that they are secure. And, uh, I think that most people would agree with me. Julia, do you?
I do. And I, I, I have never had any doubt about that, you know, in any election thus far. You know, we have had a couple of recounts in the past, uh, when votes were very close. I think particularly in the election of 2011, when there were close to, I forget what, the first time around, about 17,000 votes cast. And there was a difference of 11 votes, I think, in the, you know, in the outcome on the chief's race. And then there was recount and the difference was narrowed to seven or, you know, or, or the other. All of that indicates that, that, um, that I think our, our counts, what actually happens at the Election Commission after the ballots go in, that we can have a lot of confidence in what happens there. So, yeah, I, I, I think I generally feel like our elections are pretty secure in that respect. I'm going to leave, there are several chair, uh, questions about Cherokee Futures and the whole LLC thing. And I'm going to leave those till the last and, and kind of put them together. Uh, we have a question. Do you think current vendors should be banned from making donations? Did you speak to someone today about this as well, Mary? Is that what I understood?
Not really. I, I did discuss it with some people and to get their opinion. You know, I think some would look at donations from our vendors as questionable or perhaps even unethical. But you know, it's not illegal. You know, people are entitled to donate to the candidate of their choice. And if they wish to support them, that is their right. And, uh, we have campaign, uh, finance, as far as campaign finance, there are limits as to what can be done. But I think that that is the right of citizenship to donate to the candidate of your choice. Yes, if you have perhaps a contract of some type within Cherokee Nation or if you're a vendor, uh, perhaps it might appear unethical, but that is your right. Unethical, some may say so. Illegal, no, it's not. What's your opinion, Julia?
Well, I, I think I would offer, uh, just a different perspective. You know, the right of vendors to, to donate can contribute to a sort of pay-to-play type of system. But if we flip that coin over, I could see maybe that if vendors are banned from making donations, that it could actually be a protection to them because you at least frequently hear, uh, anecdote at least about vendors sort of being shaken down for campaign donations. And, um, you know, that's unfortunate if, if that is indeed happening. So, you know, we've got both ends of the spectrum. Then we may want to protect vendors and, and we may want to, uh, eliminate vendors from accessing a, a pay-to-play or, you know, being exploited in a pay-to-play, uh, type of situation. But, um, I, I think we do have a problem with this. And I would say that just looking at the campaign finance reports, that, uh, a lot of donations are, are coming from people who are vendors or people who are in, um, elected or appointed positions or people who are in high-level, uh, executive positions with our, um, our entities. And, um, it's, it's a very disproportionate amount that is coming from those individuals, it seems like, into campaigns. And I, I kind of bristle at the idea that those are the people who are having a lot of influence on the outcomes of our elections rather than just the everyday voter and citizen. So I think that campaign financing is one of the top concerns of, of the, the tribal council. And that's going to be a prominent aspect of, um, election law reform.
I see there's a lot of comments coming up on the screen about this very subject. Yeah. It looks like there's a, a wide range of opinions on it.
The, uh, just in a general sense, my, my feeling is that there's too much money in Cherokee Nation elections, period. When anybody, when you've got to be able to find a million, $2 million to even be able to think about being a serious candidate for principal chief, that knocks almost everyone, you know, out of the race. And, uh, and only a few people are ever going to be able to, to do that. And I do think that's a problem. People may not know, uh, I think we're anticipating anywhere from $20,000 to $30,000 is what someone's going to have to spend, uh, to run for a, a seat on the tribal council. And again, that knocks almost everyone out of, out of contention. So, you know, just overall, I think we've got to figure out some ways to put some caps on, um, the, the spending that is going on in our campaign. And that's actually one of the questions. And I think the remainder of the questions that were given to us in advance are about the, the, the existence of LLCs as part of our election process. And this has been true for the last three and maybe four elections, something like that. PACs are not legal, but, uh, LLCs may be a PAC, you know, under another guise. That question came in front of the previous Attorney General and he said that the LLCs are not PACs. But, uh, the, the current Attorney General in our, our, our office right now has used the phrase dark money in relation to what is going on in the Cherokee Nation in recent elections. And our current Attorney General has indicated that her office is very, very concerned about this. And, um, I think that there are a lot of us who would like to, um, get some control and maybe some elimination of, um, of the dark money. There are questions about the last election. What is Cherokee Futures, which is an LLC that was, uh, supporting the campaign of Chief Hoskin? And why could the current chief receive large donations? But Walking Stick, the other candidate with, who also had an LLC supporting him? Why could they not? There is another question. Why is Cherokee Futures, what is Cherokee Futures and why is there a lawsuit? Uh, another question. I thought PACs were not legal. Why could Chuck Hoskin use a company like Cherokee Future? And then again, why is it legal to donate to a company that funds multiple candidates bypassing election law maximum donation standards? The, 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 the process of establishing LLCs is traditionally, as I understand it, intended to separate or, or must separate direct involvement by a candidate and a campaign from an LLC that may be, um, created for the purpose of supporting that candidate. I think it would be naive of any of us to think that that actually happens. And I don't care who the candidate is, you know, whether it's in our elections, whether it's in national elections. But I think one thing that became apparent is that the relationship between, uh, David Walking Stick campaign and his LLC was very open. And it's been my sense that the candidate perhaps did not entirely, um, understand the, the limitations on, um, being directly related and directly involved. Both LLCs could receive large donations. And it's true that I think this is the way that, um, campaign limitations on donations were getting skirted. Cherokee Futures, there were problems with, with BATU. Two main ones, as I understood it, that this was, uh, an LLC that was created, and had an address that turned out to be the address of the father of the candidate. And so that indicating a relationship that is at least on the appearance is much too close. Because who thinks that a father and son aren't talking to each other about this? The other aspect, however, is that, um, there were things being reported. And I, I have to be very, I have to stop and think about this. That were very general expenditures, that were very general on the part of the LLC that were things like office supplies, et cetera, et cetera. That it was inappropriate, uh, that those kinds of things needed to go on the campaign finance report of the candidate. Those are direct expenditures by the campaign. So, um, you know, I, I mean, in both instances, there were just things about them that were much too squirrely, that were much too close. It was apparent that candidates were much too involved in relationship with these entities when they really needed to stay away. But that's gone on for, for years. It's probably gone on for the last four or five elections that we've had. And I'm sorry, I'm so vague on, but I, I, I confess, I, you know, I'm not in the weeds on this. To, um, to know, but I think the appearance of proprietary, of impropriety certainly leads us to think that, there were problems there on both sides. Any comment, Mary?
No, no. Again, you know, I, I hope everyone understands that this election reform committee, you know, is relatively new. It's, uh, it's a new beginning. And, uh, you know, as you said, there's been three meetings. Uh, of course, they have. Of course, they have doubled their time, realizing that progress needs to be made and realizing that to somewhat there, there may be a sense of urgency, you know, to make sure this gets accomplished and that meaningful reform happens. And I hope everyone knows that we're trying and that the group is very diversified, and I'm, I'm optimistic and I'm really hopeful. And Julia, as a, a full-time member of that committee, you know, I applaud all your efforts and everything you're doing on there to direct, direct, to assist in directing that committee to stay on, on track and on target, and we look forward to hearing more back in the future.
Yeah. Well, you know, it's just a work group, and I mean, the, the product of this work group is going to come out to the full council and, you know, at that point, every member of the full council will make additional contributions, and I'm sure will revise and refine it still more. And we certainly hope that we can get to a place where there's pretty good consensus of, but I think a lot of people are understanding that we, we have some real gaps and we need to make some changes here in our election law. I, I do want to go to some of the, we've got a lot of comments in the chat, but I think there are some things that are also questioned, so let's see if we can take a look at some of those. We have, has anyone living overseas reported difficulty in getting their ballot notarized or have they stated they did not vote because of the notary hurdle? Yes. I heard from at least one individual, and I know that, you know, that nobody overseas has heard of notarizing ballots and, or an American citizen who was living in England, I, that I know, who I know, was communicating to me that since they did not live in London, where the only American Embassy was, which was the only place that they could get something notarized without paying $50, the equivalent of $50 for a notary, and this gentleman did not live in London, he would have had to travel there to get it notarized at the Embassy, and no, he did not vote because, because of that, even though he received a ballot. So, there's another, yes, it's a big problem. Has online voting been considered? I have. I've thought about that. It's, it's an interesting thing to think about. I, I think we would want to, to maybe see how that goes in other elections. I think there are some states that do online voting right now. I think we're all probably concerned about just doing our voting via the web at this point, just because of the potential for hacks that we're understanding, but I think it's certainly something worth researching and considering.
You know, Julia, also with the online voting, there would at least be proof that you have received a ballot and that you've had the chance to cast your vote, just as if you had faxed it in or sent it in online, whereas if you mail it in, it doesn't have the security of, say, one online or a faxed-in ballot. So, for those, those citizens who wish to mail in their ballot, please pick up the phone and call and verify that your ballot was received. Make a note of who you talked to and what time you talked to them, and to make sure that you know you've got a ballot coming to you, that it was formally and properly requested, because you may have no way of proving it otherwise. That is an advantage of doing it online via fax or, you know, sending it in, as Julia just said, and I would encourage every citizen to do that.
Yeah. Another question, this one is easily answered. Of all registered Cherokee voters, what percentage are at-large registered voters? Or maybe this, no, this is a different question than the way I originally read it. Of all registered Cherokee voters, what percentage are at-large registered voters? I don't know that off the top of my head. I, I can tell you of the percentages, the numbers that have voted in recent elections, and the at-large vote generally comprises about 25% of the vote. So, given that we are approximately two-thirds of the citizenry, we're not voting proportionally to our numbers at this point. There's a question, doesn't the annual request for a ballot assist the Election Commission in keeping voter addresses up to date? If an at-large voter moves, it would be on them to inform the Election Commission of the change in address? And yes, that's true, but isn't that also the case in, you know, state elections, federal elections? The responsibility is on the voter if they move. It's not up to the Election Commission to track them down, and it's not up to our Registration Department to track people down to make sure that they vote. One thing I think could be done is that right now, our Registration Department and our Election Commission do not communicate with each other. I mean, obviously, people talk to each other, but they don't, they don't send over notifications of changes of address and things like that. And I think that we could solve some of that issue if we made it not only possible, but mandated that, that the Election Commission and the Registration Department had to share information about updating, you know, changes of address and things like that. I, I think that could be a simple enough fix. The existing barriers to changing this law, it's just the will of the tribal council, basically, and what they, what they will want to do out of given discussion and given the sentiment of the, of the citizens about this. There's, if we do away with notarizing and requesting a ballot for at-large voters, then it seems to me ballots could be usurped and submitted by anyone living at the address, even if it's no longer the Cherokee citizen. If we don't have either process, it seems inappropriate. Folks could be the voters and not the intended Cherokee citizen. That potential is there, but again, I don't think we should be legislating on anecdotes rather than, you know, actual proven fact and data. Do we know that this is in fact going on? And again, I would just go to, to elections in states that do not require the notary and who send the absentee ballot automatically, in California being the primary example, with 39 million people. This is not a problem. People don't seem to do it. I, I manage my apartment building and we get a lot of ballots in for people or, yeah, even ballots for people who, who no longer live there. And they just go in the trash, you know? I don't think that when you've got the backup system of having to compare the signature of the voter, it's not the ballots, just go unverified. It's just that they're verified by a different process, right? And they are verified by the signature comparison process at the election office. So, I think that's where it's appropriate to handle things rather than making it the more difficult for the voter to vote. How do I know my vote gets counted? In Seattle, King County, I can check it online. You can request from the Election Commission. All you have to do is fill out a form that they have and make a copy of your citizenship card for them. They have this record. They have it in an Excel spreadsheet of who it was that voted in each of the last election, so that is available to us as well. Says we should vote on election commissioners? Should we vote on commissioners like we do on district judges, perhaps? You know, I don't. Again, there are certain things that, it's any elected official. I think especially in a small society like ours, I think they turn a whole lot on who is it that we know, you know, but we're not going to get past that. The at-large ballots are handled by a Cherokee Election Commission, right? I, that's one of the questions. I'm going through the questions that have come in to see if there...
You know, Julia, we had some really good questions this evening, and for all those who took the time to submit them, you know, we're deeply grateful because we want to try to get the answers for you. And anytime we do a town hall, if you have something that you know you would like to see us discuss or within the topic, please message one of us the question so that we can, if we don't know the answer, we can at least research it to make sure that you're better informed along with us and let us... ...the answer. But we do appreciate taking the time to, to ask us these questions. We, we want to help. That's what we're here for.
There is a comment here that LLCs as described probably are PACs, and I agree with that. I think that's exactly what they are. You know, I think that our, when the question came up before our previous Attorney General, he made the determination that, that an LLC was different from a PAC, but I, I agree. I don't see that there's really any substantial difference in the way that they're functioning. I think that was just a rhetorical twist of things that, that our present Attorney General made. That's my opinion of his opinion. One thing I would say is that I do believe that our Attorney General's office is becoming much more involved. There is not really anything in our election statute that gives authority to make determinations about some of these questions to the Attorney General. And, you know, there's a real question about whether the Election Commission should even be submitting some of those types of things to the Attorney General and the feeling that maybe the Election Commission is turning over too much responsibility in that direction. If there is a criminal investigation of some sort that needs to be made, then that needs perhaps to go to Cherokee law enforcement. If there is a prosecution that is going to be made as a result of that investigation, then yeah, that would go to the Attorney General's office. But there is nothing in our constitution or our statute that empowers the Attorney General's office to be making these kinds of decisions. And I think even under our present Attorney General and I think our office, their office, you know, the impression I get is that they would actually like to back away from being called on as much as they have been in, in this past election. And I think as we're going through, as I'm going through the chat, that that's about it on the, on the questions at this point, so. So, I think we'll, we'll end this at this time. Mary, do you want to announce the next town hall and the topics that...
Certainly. Our next town hall, the topic's going to be health care, and I know there'll be a lot of questions on that, and I want to encourage you again to contact Council Coats or myself with your questions and your concerns so that we can address them during that town hall meeting. And that will be, what, Julia, May?
Yeah, in about three months. I think we decided we were going to, maybe April, you know, that we were going to do these quarterly, so.
Great. Well, be sure and send us your questions, and we'll be excited to talk to you in April.
Yep, we will. Thank you so much, everyone, for being with us tonight. Thank you for your continuing engagement with our Cherokee Nation, and we'll see you next time.